Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, September 19th County Board Meeting for Lancaster County. For introductions, my name is Todd Wilchon. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, fellow Commissioners Jennifer Brinkman and Deb Shore. On my right, fellow Commissioners Roma Amundson and Vice Chair Bill Avery. Joining us from the County Attorney's Office, Mr. David Durbin. From the County Clerk's Office, we have the County Clerk Dan Nolte and Kelly Lundgren. From the County Board Office, we have our Chief Administrative Officer Carrie Egan and our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer Ann Ames. Now please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please start the agenda.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one, our minutes. Approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, September 12th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the last Board of Commissioners meeting held last Tuesday, September 12th. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries four yes to an abstention. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through September 19th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is a special presentation, recognition of county city building art exhibit. Patrick Gauthier.
Good morning, Mr. Bartier.
Good morning. This is where I speak.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you all. Thanks for having me here today. I think maybe you're familiar with what you're seeing in the hallway with my artwork. I'm originally from Hastings and after I graduated from high school there, I moved on to the university and got a fine arts degree. Went through the process of sculpture, painting, the whole gamut of graphic design and illustration. And after I graduated, I needed to find work, of course. So I went to, moved out to New England and that was a period in time where artwork went from traditional to computer graphics. So I jumped in and started learning computer graphics and that led me into a commercial graphic art field. And I had worked for a number of design firms and advertising agencies out there. So I put together a good basis for income and keeping my regular artwork alive. I kept my painting and illustrating career alive in the traditional sense and at the same time, got heavy into computer graphics, product illustration, graphic design, of course. But what I have out here in the hallway is a picture of all the sewers here. Is that going on now?
It'll take a few seconds to get up.
That's one of the pieces that's hanging out in the hallway now. After I lived in New England, I came back and been back here for about five years and started doing paintings and scenery that I thought was appropriate. I'd been to a number of places in Nebraska and I didn't see a lot of sewer icons, a lot of sewer prints, things like that, saw photographs. So I started working on doing a couple different pieces here. And these are more imaginative pieces. I've always let myself try to be influenced by other artists and copy styles and as well as try to come up with my own style. I think over time, when you paint enough of one style, you start picking and choosing what you like from each style and make your own. These sewers are large paintings, but they represent what would be more of a loose drawing and a loose painting. And the paint on these, if you had taken a look at the one in the hallway, it's very thick and very greasy. And sometimes it's difficult in a painting and a drawing to just let go and kind of let it form itself. This is a, this sewer and some other prints I'll put up here real quick are a good example of kind of going with the flow, doing what you need to do to get a painting done. And a lot of times you end up getting something that you didn't realize was going to come out of the end of a brush. This, this card here is something that, there we go, is something I've done on a local level recently. These hearts, the one on the left is called Everything Nice in Nebraska. And then the newest one that I did is Husker Nation. That was unbilled outside of the stadium with Tom Osborne. And this is a way to kind of get back in touch with things that are going on in Nebraska. Some of the other, and just to let you know, I'll leave some pieces of artwork and some pieces like this behind here. So feel free to help yourself as some prints of the sewers in this information here. I started out when I was doing commercial graphics, doing product illustrations for different companies. These illustrations here represent things that I've done in the fashion industry in New York City and Boston and Rhode Island. These were pieces that I would do the original drawings and then I'd also have to do the drawings and schematics to actually be able to make these things. This happened with a lot of product, product packaging. I'd been able to work for companies like Hasbro and did a lot in the souvenir industry, the fashion industry, toy companies, product development. So this shows, in my world, this shows you have to be able to draw something and know what it is you're working on and able to build it, make it accurate. But in some cases too, you have to, what I said earlier, let yourself go and sometimes things will come out that you didn't expect. Did products for Coach, belt buckles, bangles, rings, enamel filled products. So that kind of, the reason I brought these samples is to show that coming out with a fine arts degree, I think it's important when you learn how to draw, to be able to draw correctly, accurately, and be able to push yourself to a point where you learn the rules in order to know how to break the rules. It's not an easy thing to do because once you get to a certain point, you'll say, what was all that practice for? Looks like a photograph, you know? So being in the commercial, commercial field, you can do a lot of that now with computers. Started doing some Nebraska scenery, the color, probably a little distorted there, but started doing things of metal arc, fall scenes. Let's see. There. Does that come across pretty clear?
That's pretty, yeah, yeah, it's pretty.
Interesting story, I was at the grocery store the other day and they had a big barrel of gourds sitting out front. And I stopped my grocery cart and leaned over and took a picture. And my cart was here and people were here trying to look at them. And I felt like, oh, I'm doing something kind of strange here. But in this case here, you can see the accuracy and the color that comes out in some of these paintings. And you have to understand that before you can draw it or paint it. These are some illustrations I've done of animals. I suppose this ties into what I've been doing compared to the paintings that I have hanging in the hallway. And those paintings are a chance to break away from the realism. Spent a lot of years doing the commercial design, making things look like what they're supposed to look like, but wanted to take my creativity, the color, painting, painting textures and things like that. And so I started doing these Americana paintings. And I've been interested in doing these now for 30 years or so. One of my favorite artists is Charles Wysocki. I don't know if you know who he is. Grandma Moses, her artwork is very naive and very basic. I lived in Vermont, Boston and some other place, and the folk art kind of brings itself to a down home feeling. And this is a drive I used to take to get to my house in Vermont. And sometimes you have to just stop and take a photo. I was on my way from Vermont back to Boston one morning and this picture was right in front of me. I thought, okay, I've got to take a picture of this. So I stopped the car, pulled over, took a picture of it. But you have to also be brave too, because I've had policemen stop me and say, is everything okay? Like, yeah, everything's okay, I'm just getting a picture of this, this farm. And what I mean sometimes is when you do a painting, you can paint and get a feeling of something. It doesn't necessarily have to be a perfect photograph of a painting. This has a total feel of a tornado. And I wasn't in a good mood when I did it. You can see that. But that is probably about this thick. And you just let it go and sometimes you go with things and the colors come out, there's greens in there, there's glues in there. And one of the unexpected things that everybody says is, look at the cow. That was just a speck that came out of the, out of the painting itself. But these are paintings that are earlier paintings that kind of allow myself to, again, be able to learn the rules so that I can also break the rules. This is a hotel in Rhode Island. I had a house down near the ocean. Beautiful area down there, flowers, beach, hotels. But it was also a chance for me to work with light. I don't know how, I'm not going to show you everything I have here. I brought a lot because I could talk about my artwork all day. But here's another. But I also, also found that when I was younger, I started doing artwork based around holidays. And that was something that I made basically for Christmas cards. I kind of started doing Christmas and then I thought, well, I've got to be, learn to do something else. So started getting into some fall scenes. This one is a porch that basically was taken in the winter, photograph that was taken in the winter, excuse me. I can go in and change pictures around, seasons around. There was no pumpkin on the porch. The colors in the background of the bushes and things like that remind me of cranberry bogs in Cape Cod. But there's a lot of different things that you can do to enhance paintings. Now this one here, growing up in Hastings, the county fair would come around. And I don't think there's anything more exciting than being on a Ferris wheel when a thunderstorm's coming in. And this is one of the paintings I did just recently. A lot of these come back from memories that I had growing up. This is something I did not see, but it's something that I've felt from the past, something that, with the feeling sometimes you can get, in that case, it's not a Halloween picture, but you can kind of feel that it has a bit of a haunted feeling to it, which I think that's good about this time of year. So in a nutshell, I started out painting and drawing as a kid and let that grow into college. Got a degree in painting, fine art, basically drawing too. And over the years, it led to computer graphics, working for design firms, some Fortune 500 companies. I don't know if you're familiar with G-Tech, but they implemented the lottery here. So I moved to New England to work for a company to implement lottery for a state in Nebraska. And that was a big deal. I got to work on the point of purchase designs, the ticket designs, the proposals, a lot of different aspects. And then when the lottery was implemented, that was one of pretty much all the states in the United States and some international states too. So being able to take artwork from growing up in Nebraska to coming in all, all the way, sorry about that, all the way around to painting and illustrating on a professional level and being able to come back to Nebraska and be heavily involved with this Nebraska by Heart project. I'm very excited about that. I don't know if you have followed that closely, but there's two puzzles that have also been created. I designed those. And one of them is based on the painting of this heart. Yeah, this heart here. This is Everything Nice in Nebraska. And, has anybody seen this down in front of the post office? Yeah. And then, of course, this one's down in front of the stadium. It's taken quite a few hours to do and they took up most of my basement for quite a while. So if you're ever out and you wanted to look around for those, those are downtown in front of the post office and in front of the stadium. So I think in a nutshell, that covers.
Thank you so much. I mean, I, excuse me, obviously you're very-
Thank you for having me.
You're very talented, obviously with the different mediums that you've, both in your professional career, excuse me, but also in your free time, that obviously you've got a lot of talent. So we very much appreciate you joining us this morning and sharing just a little bit of your portfolio with us. Are there any questions? Oh, Roma?
Well, I don't have a question, but I've been in Vermont in the fall and you've captured the colors exquisitely.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will look forward to enjoying your artwork for the next month, right here in our lobby.
Thank you so much for being with us today.
Thank you. Here are some pictures of some sewers I'm going to leave behind here, help yourself to them. And here's a print of another one of the paintings that is out in the hallway. This is an example of a painting in the hallway and another painting in the hallway. Some of them don't have two-sided prints. Some of them are single-sided prints, so you're going to have to fight for the ones that have two sides there.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Next is number four, new business, a resolution authorizing temporary installation of traffic control devices in Lancaster County.
Good morning, Ms. Dingman.
Good morning, Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So about two weeks ago, we started with the redecking of the West Denton Bridge, or the bridge just right outside of West Denton Bridge in 138. And immediately, we really had some, some bad traffic behavior. A lot of excessive speeds on the dirt roads, a lot of complaints about dust and a lot of complaints about speeding. And so we've done a couple of things already. We rented a water truck and we have created the policy within county engineering that anytime we're going to do a detour off a paved road that has more than 1,000 cars, we're going to go ahead and water that detour twice a day to try to keep the dust down. And then also, I really think reducing the speed would help with the safety of this detour right now and it would also help keep the dust down. So I'm recommending that we do reduce the speed in these two areas for the duration of the construction project. And I'll probably come forward in a couple of weeks and do the same with the Waverly project on 148 Street with the three small bridges.
So can you kind of outline the, you could have talked about the installation of traffic control devices. Can you kind of explain what they are?
Sure. So sometimes in engineering, you know, we have standard terms and so I'll apologize, Commissioner Wilchon. Traffic control device is maybe more plainly a speed limit sign in this case, or it could be any sign is a traffic control device. But in this case, it is a speed limit sign stating 40 miles an hour. The additional exhibit that I have put up on the screen shows the two locations where we would put those signs noted by the red Xs. And so that people have the notice that this road has a reduced speed. And again, we're really hoping that this will help with the safety. I've had a lot of complaints from the adjacent residents and really trying to look for, for a solution that meets the needs of all.
So will, will there be additional markings on the sign that, because I know a lot of people probably are used to the speed limit, but they probably need to be, have some type of-
So we will follow the uniform traffic control device manual, which we're required to follow. In this case, because it is a detour, there are some orange markings that appear on the sign, not the sign itself, but detours are marked in orange. But we will follow what is required in the code and that is what we do for the installation of all of our traffic control devices.
Okay. Any other questions for the engineer?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second authorizing the temporary installation of traffic control devices on West Denton Detour. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4B is a special designated license application from Deer Springs Winery for a benefit fundraiser at 16255 Adams Street, Lincoln on October 14th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the special designated license application from Deer Springs Winery for an event on October 14th. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is setting the salary for the following deputy county attorneys in the amount of $63,358.88 as attorney one is effective October 2nd, 2017. This is for Braden, Braden Shore and Haley Messerschmidt.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to set the salary for two deputy county attorneys. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is in agreement with Great Plains Appraisal, Inc. for qualified professional appraisal services to assist the county assessor's office in performing the appraisal functions necessary to process the Tax Equalization Review Commission appeals for the 2017 tax year and ending pending appeals from past tax years. Total compensation for services shall not exceed $200,000.
Good morning, Tom Kubert with Great Plains Appraisal. This is a renewal of a contract that is annually before you, operating in conjunction with the Board of Equalization Referee and referee coordinator contracts this year. This would cover 2017 as well as past years. In terms of past years, I did a little checking today. Right now, we have about 251 parcels with pending cases from prior years. 133 of those are encompassed by two owners. So if we reduce those, we're down about 120 pending cases. They have multiple years involved, going back as far as 2013. We have eliminated all the 2012 cases, which is good. We are expecting more this year with Lancaster County doing a revaluation on residential and doing roughly 3,500 hearings in the summer. We know that we'll see some cases be appealed to the state level and this contract would cover those as well as the prior years. And I'd also be available to answer any questions for you.
Go ahead. Any questions, Mr. Kubert?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Great Plains Appraisal for the qualified professional appraisal services and to assist the county assessor's office to process the Tax Equalization Review Commission appeals for 2017 and prior years. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
4E is revised insurance requirements for county contracts.
I see the direct purchasing agent coming up. Good morning, Mr. Walla.
Good morning, Bob Walla, purchasing agent. These have been brought to you in the past and this is just a revision that's been worked out with the city and the county attorneys and then also the risk managers for the city and county. Basically, we believe that this is the final draft at this point, right Dave? And the only, the only thing is, is as the insurance industry changes, there's the possibility of us changing as well. So it could potentially come back to you in the future, but as of right now, we believe this is the document that we'll be using on all of our bids and contracts.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the revised insurance requirements for county contracts. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is a quit plane deed from Lancaster County to Dennis L. Buell, revocable trust conveyed property generally located in a portion of South 54th Street vacated by county resolution R-1614 in Lancaster County. Motion carries five to zero. F is a quitclaim deed from Lancaster County to Dennis L. Buell, revocable trust to convey property generally located in a portion of South Fifty-Fourth Street, vacated by county resolution R-16-14 in Lancaster County.
Dave Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. Since the agenda was posted, we have amended this to include the trustee's name in the deed. That's only changed to the document that the board has seen, so I would just ask that the board approve this as amended by the county attorney's office.
Move approval as amended by the county attorney's office.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the quitclaim deed as amended by the county attorney's office for two Dennis Buell revocable trusts. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchin. Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G are contracts with the following providing annual service of fire alarm panel inspection, testing, and repair, terms of contract are one year from the date of execution, and this is for Protech Central, Inc., in the amount not to exceed three thousand dollars, and total fire and security in an amount not to exceed one thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve two contracts with providers to provide annual service of firearm, fire alarm panel inspection, testing, and repair. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4H is an amendment to county contract C-16-620 with TAB Products Company LLC for their annual supply of district court file folders. The amendment renews the contract from October eighteenth, two thousand seventeen through October seventeenth, two thousand eighteen. The cost to county is not to exceed three thousand, two hundred dollars.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with TAB Products Company for the annual supply of district court file folders. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
And carries five to zero. 4I is to be held. J is an amendment to county contract C-14-412 with Gray Bar Electric for their annual supply of household miscellaneous batteries. The amendment renews the contract from September ninth, two thousand seventeen through September eighth, two thousand eighteen. The cost to county is not to exceed two thousand dollars.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Gray Bar Electric for the annual supply of household miscellaneous batteries. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K are change orders to county contract number C-16-569 with Hockins Construction for a total increase of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and six cents, and this includes change order number three to provide for miscellaneous additional grading around windstream pedestals for an increase of four thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and six cents. Change order number four to provide for grading and installation of high-performance reinforcement of turf reinforcement app for an increase of eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty cents. And change order number five for LES purchase of a culvert leftover from the project for an increase of seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty cents.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. These are change orders three through five for the job on Rockabye between Eighty-Fourth Street and Ninety-High Street, and these are all at no cost to the county, because these are costs being borne solely by LES.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the change orders to county contract with Hockins Construction. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next are consent items, setting the following public hearings. Setting the final tax request at a different amount than the prior tax request, than the prior year tax request on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, at nine a.m. in room one twelve of the county city building. This request is for Lancaster County and the Rural Library for Lancaster County. Amendment of the Lancaster County General Assistant guidelines on Tuesday, October third, two thousand seventeen, at nine a.m. in room one twelve of the county city building. Change of zone number one seven zero two five from A G and I to be on property legally described as lot sixteen I T, located in northeast quarter of section thirty-four, township nine, range eight, Lancaster County, Nebraska, generally located at the intersection of Highway two and Highway forty-three on Tuesday, October third, two thousand seventeen, at nine a.m. in room one twelve of the county city building.
Move approval of the consent items. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number six is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, but do so at this time.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on a matter not on the agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please continue with the agenda.
Number seven are announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, at ten thirty a.m. in the Bill Oxford Studio at the county city building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not hold a staff meeting on Thursday, September twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, due to their attendance at the following legislative retreat beginning at eight thirty a.m. at Cornhusker Bank at eighty-three ten O Street. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, at nine a.m. in room one twelve of the county city building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, at four p.m. in room one twelve of the county city building regarding the Board of Equalization Property Evaluation Protest Process. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh two four four one seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit link NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move adjourn. Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is adjourned. Next, I'm going to start the agenda for the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Addition or copy of argument material to be discussed at each open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Also, attendance this morning is Scott Gaines from the county assessor's office. Agenda item one are minutes. Approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, September twelfth, two thousand seventeen.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the last Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, September twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the agenda.
Avery.
He stepped out of the room.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Abstain.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries three yes, one abstention. Number two, additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the addition and deduction. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the last Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, September twelfth. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the agenda.
Avery.
He stepped out of the room.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Abstain.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries three yes, one abstention. Number two, additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the addition and deduction. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is a public hearing. This is for a motor vehicle tax exemption application for Vital Services, Inc.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption application submitted by Vital Services, Inc. Anyone here to testify in support? Opposition or in the judicial capacity? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing.
Number, next is number four, action on motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the motor vehicle tax exemption application. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchin.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Move adjourn. Second.
What? Do we need to allow an opportunity for public comment? Anyone in the audience here to make a comment on something not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none.
Move adjourn. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.